We call this Monday, December 12th, 2022 regular board meeting of the Lakota Local School District to order. Mr. Zink, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here.
Board, we'll move to item two on our agenda, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Thank you, Mr. Adi. Any discussion?
Yes, I have clarification on, or can I have some clarification on board action items? Motion to select master facilities plan. Is this gray configuration or is this actual master facilities plan?
Actual plan.
It's the
November it was.
It's the plan which includes the gray configuration.
Okay.
There is not a price tag, however, attached to it.
Yeah.
Does that clarify it?
It does. I, yeah, we'll tack that when we get there. Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing nothing further, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board, I move to item three on our agenda, which is to move into executive session. I am looking for a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official at a conference with legal counsel concerning disputes that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Please call the roll.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board, we will adjourn to the downstairs conference room.
Your mic's on, girls.
Good evening. The board met earlier for executive session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, and a conference with legal counsel concerning disputes that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. Board, we will move to, excuse me, number four in our agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mrs. Casper, will you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I will save my comments for later in the meeting. Superintendent comments?
I'll do the same, thank you.
Treasurers' comments?
The only comment that I have would be we have a budget stabilization transfer for the board's consideration later.
Thank you, for those who don't know what that means, that's our rainy day fund, so that's great to hear. We'll move to number five on the agenda, the school spotlight, Mrs. Fuller.
Good evening. I'm excited to share a little bit about the positive things happening throughout Lakota in tonight's school spotlight. With the holidays upon us, first up tonight is Lakota Central High School. While Lakota Central launches a new high school for us this year, it actually has taken two existing programs, the Lakota Academy and a virtual learning option, and brought them under one roof. Central now offers expanded, flexible, and non-traditional learning opportunities for our students. As you may have seen on the news recently, Lakota Central High School is the only school representing the state of Ohio and Washington DC this holiday season. Through the America Celebrates Ornament Program, our students submitted photographs of nature that were inspired by the horizon on our state seal. The ornaments now decorate Ohio's tree, which is one of 58 trees surrounding the national tree. Our teacher, Jody Kessler, spearheaded this project for our students. We certainly appreciate Spectrum News One and Channel Five for coming out recently to share stories about this project, and yes, that's a plug that the stories are on their website. So Positive Behavior Interventions and Support, or PBIS, is a program in our K6 building that centers around principles like respect, integrity, positivity, citizenship, compassion, and teamwork. At Creekside Early Childhood School, students are able to earn Cub Cash by demonstrating the principles of PBIS. This year, the school's PBIS Action Team has created a Woot Woot wagon that travels around the school each month for students to spend their Cub Cash on items, which also includes lots of experiences. And I understand that the people running the Woot Woot wagon actually walk around going "Woot Woot." The Woot Woot wagon is stocked based on student voice and input. For example, a student might use their Cub Cash to purchase a fidget spinner, choose to be a guest on the morning announcements, spend some time with Bendy, the school's therapy dog, or even have lunch with the principal. Now heading over to Endeavor Elementary, every classroom has a student ambassador as part of the Young Scholars Program. The group helps welcome new students, act as greeters for the public during special events, as well as participating in other projects around the school. Lately, they've been working with the school's PBIS team of teachers to build positive behavior expectations for all of the students. Last week, they actually stayed after school to help teachers record videos of the Rocket Way, because they are the Endeavor Rockets. The kicker? The teachers filmed the wrong way to behave, which provided lots of laughs for the students. The videos will be shared when students return from winter break in January. Now, sticking with the student ambassador theme, a brand new program at Ridge Junior School this year is already making its mark. Known to Ridge staff and students as ambassadors, this handpicked group of eighth-grade leaders is charged with leading the new student tours to help acclimate their new friends to life at Ridge. The group is The group is also currently planning a kindness campaign to start the new year off right when everyone returns from winter break. Ridge counselor Kelly Carstens has big plans for the group and wants students to both inspire others and be inspired to discover their leadership potential. We're so excited to have a few members of this special group here with us tonight.
I brought my official clicker along. Good evening. My name is Kelly Carstens, and I, along with Michelle Williamson, my student counseling intern, are the Ridge Advisors of our ambassador program. This evening, you will hear directly from four of our Ridge Finest, representing our 26th, eighth-grade ambassadors. Thank you to Mrs. Cahill and Mr. Morrow for supporting us with this program. Thank you to the board for this opportunity to present our program. And finally, thank you to these students and their families for making a difference at Ridge. I especially want to take a moment to thank the four representatives who have worked countless hours to write and present their personal stories that you will hear tonight. I'd like to thank Leema Abdou, Alex Winter, Carmelo Jordan, and Aubrey Hinkle. I am already incredibly proud of each of you. Your stories are true gifts. You make a beautiful difference in our community. So now I'd like to turn it to our first presenter, Leema Abdou.
Hi, my name is Leema Abdou, and today I'm going to be introducing the Ridge Student Ambassadors. We are 26 students in the ambassadors, and it's a diverse group that represents many different cultures, backgrounds, and races, and stories. And, um, like, I'm going to be representing, um, I, I, um, school, and, um, that is the ambassador's motto, um, building, building connections through leadership. And now I'm going to be, now I'm going to be sharing my personal story. Last year, I moved schools, and I was a completely different person. And I was like, no, I miss my old school, and, um, I miss my friends, and wanted to go back. And it was actually my first experience with the hijab, and I was like nervous about it, and I thought maybe people might dislike me or say negative things about me. So I was like, kind of aggressive with people, but then Ms. Carstens helped me a lot, and I started being friends with more people, and I met amazing people. And this year, Ms. Carstens told me that she wanted me to be an ambassador, and she explained the whole thing to me. And I told her that I would be glad to be in it, and it has affected me a lot and changed me a lot, and helped me be the best version of myself and always make better choices. And, um, I actually realized that I love helping people, and I love being around people, and I actually toured like seventh graders and like three, and like I made, like, I'm friends with them now. And, um, it has helped me, like, be social people even though I wasn't before, and it has helped me a lot, and I appreciate the opportunity. And now I'm going to leave you with my friend, Alex Winter.
Hi. Sorry. Hi, my name is Alex Winter. I'm a Ridge Junior Ambassador, and I'm going to be telling you guys what the ambassadors do and just a little bit about myself. We build connections on a more personal level with the new students, so we want to make them feel comfortable and connected at our school when they first arrive. We also serve as representatives, especially for the adults and just new kids. We take them on all these learning walks, and we give them so many new opportunities. We also provide sixth-grade tours, so sixth graders coming in to seventh grade, we want to prepare them for what seventh grade will be like. And we also provide summer tours, so those are just tours before the start of the school year. Those are just the sixth graders coming in for, to seventh grade. We just want to give them the layout of the building and where all the teachers are. The ambassador program has actually had such a substantial impact on me. It's allowed me to be a lot more social, especially when just touring all the kids around. I've met so many of them, and I love hearing about them just day-to-day. It, it makes me feel a lot more helpful, so just knowing that I can help out the teachers instead of them just having to do it themselves, helping out the staff, has really changed me. And just meeting new friends, it's been such a great experience, and I'm glad to have met them. But on a more personal note, I was helped by an eighth grader when I first came here. I came here all the way from Montana, just completely different state. Let me tell you, Ohio people are very different from Montana people. It was, uh, it was hard to find my way around when I first came here, but, uh, like, automatically after my first week, I knew that this was going to be my area, this was going to be my new experience, and I was just going to embrace it. So what does the ambassador program do? It sets up people like me to have just a great two years at Ridge. And now let me introduce Carmelo Jordan.
Um, hi. So my name is-
Could you pull the microphone up a little bit, please? Thank you.
So hi, my name is Carmelo Jordan, and today I'm just going to be like explaining my part about me being ambassador. So the first question you could ask is, why do the ambassadors matter? We are leaders in the school, and people look up to us. We try to lead by example, have been helpful and respectful to all people. Represent all students, not just one student group in Lakota Ridge Junior School. We are the face of Ridge and give opportunity and hope to new students. Us ambassadors, we truly care, and we want to connect with the students and let them know that they are now part of the Ridge family. And the impact of being ambassador on me is like, I'm going to be sharing a personal story of like the impact of me being ambassador. So I've done three tours this year, and the most important tour to me is the first tour that I did. So the first tour that I did was with a new student named Zion, and like the moment, like soon as I started touring him, I realized that we have like a lot of things in common, like that we both play football, we both play basketball, and we both run track. So like as soon as, like, the day I met him, like, we were complete strangers, but like as soon as like I started touring him, we just like finally like connected as friends. Like the day I met him, like, we also, after the tour, I threw him around all his classes and show him everything, like help him pick up his crumple. And then when we got to lunch that day, I sat with him, and I brought all my friends that I normally sit with at lunch, like sit with him. So he didn't feel like an outcast. Like ambassadors just like helped me be like more like a helpful person than I was before, because I wasn't as helpful. But now me being ambassador, I just like to help people more. And now I want to be giving a stand to my partners project, Aubrey Hinkle.
Hi. My name is Aubrey Hinkle, and I will be sharing some future plans that the ambassadors have for Ridge and the community. First, I'm going to talk about the Kindness Duck Campaign. Each ambassador of the 26 ambassadors will get a rubber duck, and when we see a person, a student, doing a kind action, we will give them that rubber duck. And once they have that, we will explain to them what to do with it furthermore, so that we can spread kindness around our school. As Alex Winter said, we are also doing sixth-grade tours, so when the new students from Adina and Freedom come to Ridge, they can feel comfortable and feel like they have a good handle on the next year when they come to Ridge. Mrs. Carstens and Mrs. Cahill also go over to the elementary schools to share their annual speech about Ridge and what we have to offer. And we were hoping as ambassadors to come over and share a couple of things that we have to offer as well. Now I'm going to be sharing about how being an ambassador impacted me. Mrs. Carstens was talking to me about a student who I toured that we didn't know she was going to fit in at Ridge, if she was going to thrive, or if she was going to even, if it was going to work. And Mrs. Carstens told me that she is not thriving at Ridge, and she is doing great, and it's because of some of the things that I said while touring her, and it made me feel like I can help people and make a difference in others' lives. Now I want to say thank you to Mrs. Carstens and Mrs. Cahill for putting this all together, to the 26 ambassadors for all that you do and the tours that you give, and thank you to us for presenting and putting this all together. And especially thank you to the board members for giving us this opportunity to come here and share what a Ridge ambassador is. Thank you.
So board, our opportunity, and the rest of them are Ridge ambassadors as well, let's all step up there.
They're like, wait.
You guys did a terrific job of presenting to us, and I really like the fact that you talked, every one of you talked about what it is, and you also talked about why it mattered to you personally, that you had been impacted by somebody else, and that you were paying that forward, and that was a very cool thing to hear. I am a little curious about the rubber duck thing. Can, can you explain that a little bit more? What happens once you get a rubber duck?
So basically, once you get that, um, you, when that person sees another person doing something kind, they will spread it, and so kindness can spread around our school. And we were hoping by the end of the year, that there's going to be 26 people who are left with the rubber ducks, and maybe they can get a prize or some sort of reward for the kindness act that they've done.
It's almost like a rubber duck musical chairs?
Yeah.
Am I understanding that correctly? Very cool. Board comments, questions?
I think you were all excellent ambassadors for your school here tonight, so I can tell that I'm sure you do a great job with our students that come in. I think it can be a very difficult time for new students when they move in, as some of you have experienced, so having your skills and ability out there to make those kids feel welcome will be an excellent resource for those kids. I love that. I especially love the young man over here who said how he included the new student with his friend group at lunch, because I, I moved a lot growing up. That can be a really challenging time. I also want to commend your teacher or your counselor for making this program possible and all the work that you're doing on this, because clearly, they wouldn't have this opportunity without somebody spearheading it. So thank you, and you can tell that you've invested heavily in each of them and drawing these skills out. So what, if maybe one or two of you can answer, what skill do you feel like you've learned through this that will help you the most going forward?
The skill that I think that helped me the most, that will make me like, helped me the most going forward is definitely kindness, because doing this like help you, like, it makes you feel good, like, about being kind to others, like, it makes you like want to, like, be more kind to others, like, makes you feel like good about yourself.
Um, one thing that I learned that if I want respect, I would give it first, and so always think before I do anything, and that, um, I pause. I, um, like make better choices and always be the best version I could be of myself instead of like making poor choices.
Someone else?
Yeah. Leema, thank you for sharing your personal experience of growth, and, and I enjoy hearing all of your guys' experiences, and I like that you are helping others, and that creates joy, not only within you, but also within the people that you are helping. And that is a great skill to learn. And thank you so much for, you know, working with these, with these students and helping them grow. And I, and I see this helping make you guys successful as adults and in your jobs and, and with friends, and hold on to these skills. Thank you.
Yeah, you guys did an excellent job. This is, we know we have great kids in this district, and this is just a small example of all of the kids in our district who are representing us well, and what you're doing and what you're learning, and how you're including everyone is amazing. I know it must be nice when you're a new student, and one of you is their tour guide or their mentor for the day, and I'm sure when they walk by the hallway and pass you in the hallway, they get a sense of pride that they know someone. They can see a familiar face, and they can smile, and I'm sure that goes a long way, because we're big districts, we're big schools, and so coming in new, especially from Montana, God bless you, for getting right in there and jumping in. That's all really impressive skills, and like Darby said, you guys are learning, and these are things that are going to help you in your future. And Mrs. Carstens, I've known her for a very long time, and this is not the first program and the first school in this district that she has started, so thank you both for what you're doing to help these students achieve their success.
Yeah, I want to start with, thank you, Ms. Carstens, our colleague, thank you for doing what you're doing. This is what we want to see. And to you, the students, I can relate. I'm very excited to see this, because I've been somebody that came from a different culture, and somebody had to guide me, get me into this culture. I understand what you guys are doing as ambassadors, and there are some key things that you all said that made me feel good. Somebody said, if you need respect, you give it first. That's big. Somebody said, show kindness. Somebody said, better your choices. You don't have to come from a different country to need help. Imagine somebody from, coming from Montana, believing that Ohio is different. So that is what it is. Even if you're, you, you don't know that some, there are different cultures. Somebody coming from Montana said, it was thought that Ohio is, Ohio people are different, right? So thank you for doing what you're doing. You are making a tremendous impact. You have no idea what you're doing, but I tell you, the reward is there, and the spotlight is on you. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate you.
Yeah, kind of echo what everybody else has said. These are definitely skills that you guys will take for the rest of your lives, so good job with that. And also just the impact that you would make on the new kids. I mean, that's, it would be scary coming into the new building and not having somebody to sit with at lunch or something, so excellent job.
I think echoing what my colleagues up here at the board have said, but also, I heard two of you say specifically, but all four of you said it in different ways, we build connections, and that's almost like what you started with. And so that's really impressive, and I hope to see you do more of this as you leave Ridge and you go on to the high school level as well. So very impressive, Mrs. Carstens, Mrs. Gail, thank you, and thank you for representing not just Ridge but Lakota schools.
We know that it takes a lot of additional time and energy, so thank you to our staff for the work with these students. It shows. Similar to Mrs. Schaefer, I moved many, many times in between kindergarten and high school, and you all would have made a tremendous difference in my educational experience. So keep up the great work, we're really proud of you. Let's give them a round of applause. So I want to give your parents a chance to get a picture of all of you and the board to get a picture with you, if you'll all come up front for us.
And my, my son said the same thing, Ohio was different than-
Everybody, I mean, every, yeah.
Alright, we'll go ahead and give our kids just a moment to clear the room. If anyone would like to come forward, go ahead. We're, we're, excuse me, we'll move to number six under board action items. And we are looking at a motion to approve the second read of the board policies from our last meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a discussion?
Can we pull out the public participation policy and vote on that separately?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
So Board, public participation policy is the first item, 0169.1. We will vote separately on that. Do I need an amended motion? Or just a separate motion?
We'll do it as a separate motion.
All right. So the motion stands to approve the revised policies with the exception of the first of the second rate on 0169.1. Is there further discussion on any of those policies? Seeing none, Mr. Zink, call the roll, please.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board, I would like a motion on the second rate of 0169.1. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
I just want to go on record saying that this policy is ridiculous and it's limiting free speech and I don't support it.
Anything further? Any further discussion? I will say we had a, I believe it was an hour and a half discussion in our policy committee meeting on that particular policy. I think it was a fairly robust discussion and appreciate the very diverse points of view around the table on it. So without further discussion, Mr. Zink, please read the rule.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
I'm sorry, can you please repeat before we vote? Can you please repeat what we are voting on?
Would you please read the motion that Mrs. Bodie made for her, please?
This is voting on only policy 0169.1.
Thank you.
And we're voting to approve it?
This is to approve.
My answer is no.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Madam President, if we could just, before we take a vote, go per policy of Robert's Rules of Order and state what we are actually voting on before we take the vote.
Mrs. Bodie, if you would be willing to provide me with the number for that policy after our meeting, I would be happy to consider that. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm surprised you don't know it already.
Board, we'll move on. We're looking at B. Let me explain first before we talk about these motions. So we have in front of us B through E. These motions are to consider the master facilities plan. We're looking at specifically selecting a master facility grade level configuration options one through four. I will walk through each one. If there is a motion, then I'll look for a second. If there is no motion, or if there is a motion with no second, we move on to the next one. So there is no motion. If there is no second to the motion, we'll move on. Is that cleared, everyone?
So as we, as we go through one, two, so if you say Plan One, there's no motion, then?
Then we move on to?
Okay.
All right.
Can we have discussion?
We have to have a motion on the floor to have discussion.
For that, first, and then we separately are motioning each to approve?
Yes.
Okay. So let's just open up the motion to make a motion, right?
So we're going to go down the agenda. We'll start with Motion B. The motion to select the master facility grade level configuration option one, is there a motion? Seeing none, we'll move to option two, C. The motion to select, excuse me, the motion to select master facility grade level configuration option two. Is there a motion? Seeing none, we'll move to Motion D. The motion to select master facility grade level configuration option three. Is there a motion? Seeing none, we will move to E, the motion to select the master facility grade level configuration option four. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Secondly.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer and Mr. Adi. The floor is open for discussion.
So we are just, I just want to be clear, because in November, we were supposed to vote on grade configuration. But now it looks like we're voting on buildings as well.
That's what we said, yeah, we said that at the last meeting. The last meeting when we talked about grade configuration, we said that we would adopt a plan now, because the plan is within the grade configuration. And then we also said that, once we adopt a plan, it's not set in stone. We can then, if we like something in two or something in three, we can talk about how to do that. Talk about what part of the plan we want to do. Talk about if we want to, how we want to structure that plan. But we have to have a plan to start somewhere. And basically, we've been talking in the last two meetings, last three master facility meetings, that we're all leaning towards the grade configuration in three and four. So adopting four is adopting a great configuration.
So what I remember is you specifically mentioning that, yes. But I don't remember anyone else actually saying that we wanted to vote on the buildings, except for Linda. However, I am ready to vote on the gray configuration, but I am not ready to vote on the buildings, because after the multiple conversations that we have had in the public realm, they are not ready to vote or to make a decision on what building plan that we need as well. And I don't think there's adequate information out there on what is going to be best for the students with that specific building configuration. Now, as far as gray configuration goes, I will vote, but I will not vote. I am not comfortable voting and representing my, representing the community on what building, what the buildings should look like. We need to decide what we want to put in these buildings. We're not even confident that that's, that we need to tear down some of the buildings. We're not confident that we need to do that, exactly that. So again, I'm, I'm not comfortable with, I can vote on the gray configuration if we can say kindergarten through fifth grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and ninth through 12th. I'm comfortable with that, but I will not vote on specific buildings.
Now, the floor.
Mr. Adi?
Ms. Casper, I'll please plead your indulgence. Can you explain again for her what you just said? Explain again?
Say what I said again?
Yes.
I got it. No need. I understand.
A board member, because?
Thank you.
Please help explain that again. What you just said earlier, before?
I think you might get a repeat.
He wants to hear what I said again? Is that what he wants?
Yes.
Isaac wants to hear it. Okay.
I, what I said was that to me, it's, it's apples to apples. I mean, we're picking option four does not mean that tomorrow we break ground and tear down 10 buildings. It just means that we are, have a plan to start with. And that if we want to adjust the plan, if we want to do a timeline, we want to get more community feedback. We want to get feedback from our business community. That's what this is about. Picking this plan, it's just a starting point. I don't believe, and I could be wrong, that anything in the plan is set in stone. So if we do this, if we vote yes on master facility plan four, we then, as a board, will have a discussion on what we want that to look like in more detail.
So it doesn't make sense to me that we're voting on?
Mrs. Darby, you don't have, Mrs. Bodie, you do not have the floor.
That we should separate.
Go ahead, Mr. Adi.
Ms. Casper, thank you so much. I think even a kindergarten can understand what you said. So I appreciate that you have to explain again. Thank you.
Mrs. Schaefer, any comments?
Just to clarify, this particular plan that got motioned and seconded would have 15 schools in use, or no, the ultimate plan would, yes, would have 15 schools in use. And there would be one pre-K building, 14 K five buildings, two six, eight buildings, and two nine, 12 buildings, as it stands now. Again, there was also a report in the news that we would, part of this plan or some of the, one of these plans included building a new pre-K building. And while this does have a standalone pre-K building, it would not be new construction. According to this plan, it would be Liberty Early Childhood School. So I wanted to clarify that for anyone who hasn't been quite as intimately involved with all of this through all of our facilities meetings and this big binder that I'm now carrying around. So that's my point of clarification on that. And I guess I'll just say for me, what drew me to this, I think it's educationally sound with the split of the different schools. I like that K five students will be together. I think also from a family perspective, that that's nice, that if you have a couple of kids, they potentially will be in the same building for longer. There's less transitions. That's especially challenging for some of our students with special needs. And you won't have to see as many of those. Everyone, again, depending upon how this ultimately looks, would have the benefit potentially of attending a new high school possibly. And I, I think that would be a benefit of, it's not, certain schools are going to be new. Certain schools aren't going to be new. East and West would both have new facilities that they would be able to equally share. And for me, one of the reasons I didn't like three as well is I feel like a lot of academic time would have been lost in transition for students from space to space. So that is what led me to like this plan best.
Madam President? I would like to make a motion that we amend, amend what the motion to take out option four, to not say option four, but to select master facility grade configuration K through, K through fifth grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then ninth through 12th grade.
Is there a second to that motion? Seeing none, the motion dies. Mr. Miller, comments, Mr. Zink on the current motion?
No, I just think, I think it makes the most sense. And I, you know, I think additional thing I want to say, and I'll probably forget to thank somebody, but thanks to Chris Passard and his team for all the work with the architects and putting this together. I know it's a lot of work for everybody and we are not even slicing how difficult this is going to be over the next few years to put everything together. So it'll definitely be an uphill battle, but one that'll be good for our kids and good for our community.
Sir Zink, anything?
I think based on the work that we've put into this, this is a very, very nice, happy medium for fiscally responsible as well as putting new programs and stuff for the kids. So I think this is a, option four would be the option that I was hoping that could possibly be the direction we want to.
Can I ask a question to Mr. Zink?
Certainly.
And for those who haven't watched the facilities meeting, we did speak at the last meeting. Can you speak to what we talked about with operational savings, that this would maximize that as well?
Option four had approximately about $3 million in additional operational savings compared to option three, with option one being status quo with what we are. Option three or four also gave us the opportunity with being able to do the OFCC project to get some state shares as well. That would help minimize the impact on the local community to pay for this.
What was the total, what was the total operational savings?
11 million.
For four? Was it 11, 11 million?
It was over 7 million in terms of the staffing and those kind of costs.
It wasn't.
It was 2 million in terms of utility savings, and then another 2 million in terms of our permanent improvement.
Can you help me understand why we're voting on buildings that were, are going to potentially change? And this, that we are going to potentially change or are not do? Can you help me understand why we would act, why we would vote on that when we're really just voting on the gray configuration?
So I'm going to jump in for a moment if I could, since I haven't made, remember comments yet. That's all right. So my interest in option four and my comments in previous facility committee meetings have been mischaracterized. I did not at any point say I was voting on buildings tonight. I do believe that it's important that we move forward on this plan. What I did say was I was not willing to vote on the price tag that had been attached to it. I think the real work begins as soon as we take this vote. And that's to take apart the plan, begin to put in the details, what do our buildings look like? What, what items are on the educational horizon that we need to be considering in our plans? What trends in education? What are some curriculum options that we can't offer now because of our setup? That we might be able to do something with? The details will become fleshed out as we go. I do expect there to be more cost savings inherent in that planning work. I would like to bring in experts within, I've asked for this already with Mr. Miller, experts from our community that have construction experience, that have the opportunity to say, you know, there's some savings here in our, in our facilities planning that we might consider. So there's a tremendous amount of work that still goes into this. I personally would also like to see, as we progress here, I think it's important for our community to see transparency in this process. There should be a calendar so that our community understands, here's where we're looking at a bond issue. If that's what we need to do, here's when that'll be on the, even if it's five years down the road, here's when that will happen. I don't think there should be any guesswork to it. I also think there's still a tremendous opportunity for community engagement and input on this. There's a lot of fleshing out to deal with the users of our system, including our students. So as I said, I think there's a tremendous amount of work still to do. But this is the first step that we have to take. I am glad to see that the board is aligned on this and is moving forward with it. Are there any further comments or discussion? Otherwise, we'll move forward. Mr. Adi?
Yes, I also want to add my own two cents to this. We have gone through this process for so long. We, over the summer, we've engaged the community. We have had so many meetings, professionals advise us on this. And we've gotten to a stage where we need to move forward. Anything else is a distraction. We all know that some of our buildings are, we have had issues of floods. We have had so many issues that we need to move forward. A lot of distractions. It's time we move forward. Anything else is going to move, distract us from moving, moving. So that's why I'm in support of moving forward at this time. Thank you.
So I just want to confirm, we're basically voting on the grade configuration, because the buildings are going to change. But you're refusing to name it gray configuration. You're going to name it configuration option four.
Because we've put a lot of time and effort into this plan, Mrs. Bodie and Mr. Passard's team. It's, it's, your nitpicking from the standpoint is that maybe those buildings will stay the same, but we're not going to tomorrow break ground and tear down 10 buildings and erect new buildings. We have to have a plan. We have to have some place to start. And so this is, because we have done all of this prep, I don't understand what the problem is with voting on the plan.
And you're saying, but you're, basically, I'm just trying to get you to understand kind of what you're saying.
I understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
Because you're voting on great configuration, but you're not, you're voting on buildings, but those buildings could change. But we are voting on gray configuration. Excuse me, I had the floor.
I have the call for the votes.
Well, I have the floor. No, well, I have the floor.
Give you the floor. I don't think anybody gave you a floor.
I was just speaking. I had the floor.
Since you're jumping in, I have, Ms. Casper.
Let her finish.
I was saying, I don't understand.
Mrs. Bodie, is there anything further?
No, I think that's enough. Thank you.
Without further discussion, we will move to a vote. The motion is to select the master facility grade level configuration option four. Please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board, this has been several years worth of work. Thank you for moving forward. And I look forward to the continued work and the work with our community to make sure that this turns out to be a plan that the community is comfortable with as well. The board has just approved, we'll move to number seven, public comment. The board has just approved a revised public participation policy 0169.1, which takes effect immediately, for the most part. The primary purpose for the revision was to ensure that we focus our collective time and energy on educational issues in the district. So before I move into speaker guidelines, I just want to highlight a couple of points. There were several changes. We have a streamlined process for participants to register to speak. Participants may register on our web. Participants may register on our website or at the Lakota Central Office. Those who want to speak must register by nine AM on the day of the meeting. And this will take effect at our next meeting. Participants may register to speak on any item listed on the published agenda at the meeting at which they wish to speak. They may also speak on the following very specific topics. Child nutrition, communication, community relations, curriculum, facilities, finance, operations, programming, safety, school board, special education, student co and extracurriculars, technology and transportation. The new policy also provides that the board will not hear compliments or complaints about Lakota local school employees during the public participation portion of the board meeting. If a community member would like to share a compliment or a complaint, then you do so through email, website submission, direct conversation, and through other available outlets. Please note that staff is not one of the topics listed in list above. The new policy also prohibits the display of posters, signs, objects, or other items that may obstruct the view of someone else or otherwise disrupt the orderly progress of the meeting. As a reminder, the public participation guidelines that we follow is stated in the Lakota Local School District Board of Education Policy zero, one, six, nine point one. The board very much values public expression on educational issues. The Board of Education also values an efficient and orderly meeting. And therefore, public participation will be governed by the following rules as of tonight outlined in our policies. For our speakers, for tonight, you have registered on the sign in sheet. For our next meeting, please register ahead of time on the district website or in person at Lakota Central Office by nine AM of the day of the meeting. Participants are allowed to comment on specific items on the agenda or on the following topics as I've already listed. Participants are not allowed to raise compliments or complaints about Lakota local school employees during the public participation portion of the board meeting. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Your address is already listed on the registration form, and so you do not need to put that on record. Each statement made by a participant is limited to three minutes. We have a timer on our screen up here. At the point that you see it go to yellow, please wrap up. We want your comments to be finished at the point that it goes to red. Each statement must be directed to the presiding officer. And no person may address or question board members individually. Please be mindful of the guidelines. If they're violated, there'll be a warning. Please be respectful for our audience members. A reminder to those in the audience. We ask that you respectfully listen to all points of view at the microphone. They all matter to the Board of Education. Clapping, booing, and commenting amongst yourself is distracting. It makes it very hard for our speakers to be heard by the board. And it does take away from the time that's allotted for public comment in our meetings. Displaying posters, written signs, objects, or other written or electronic materials which may obstruct the view of other attendees, obstruct the video recording of the meeting, distract either the board or members of the audience, or otherwise interfere with the orderly progress of the board meetings is not permitted. If a lack of public decorum interferes with the orderly conduct of our meeting, I may call for a recess or for an adjournment to another time. As I explained, we sincerely want to hear from you. It's critical that there be public decorum in our meetings in order to allow us to do so. I'm going to call your name and ask that you line up on the side so that we have a running line and can get through more people that way. Again, a reminder, three minutes. Please be finished when the timer goes to red. And a reminder about our guidelines. First up, we have Julie Perino. Emily Jackson follows. Vicky Wearden and Alex Argo. Please do. Mrs. Perino.
I just want to say.
Could you please bring the microphone and say your name first?
Julie Perino. I just want to say I appreciate double speak. I also like to call it out when I see it. If we would like to have decorum and you want to hear people and what they have to say, then you should allow it. What you just did is shut it down. And you know what you did. The last board meeting, there was a statement made. And I will quote. The board is confident, and this is a two board business, okay? The board is confident, however, that it exercised all due diligence in this matter. These claims against the unnamed employee.
Mrs. Perino. No comments about any employees, good or bad.
So unnamed? That's not okay?
Unnamed.
So I'm quoting you. So so you won't let me speak?
You are welcome to speak except on on any of those topics that I've already listed.
Well, you just changed the policy since we've been here. So I'd like to get through what I have. Are you disallowing?
I am providing you with a warning.
You take, okay, here we go. How can it be said that all due diligence is done when no one's explained with the words in the transcript? Line items, I won't even read what he said in his words, but line items. Six sixty-six, seven oh four, seven oh seven, seven oh nine, ten seventy-one. Once you look at the transcript and you see these words, how can you not see moral failure? On record admissions. Moral failure, not criminal, moral. Is our school board in agreement with sexual desires and fantasies about children? It's a very simple question, and you guys are silent on it. Hiring a law firm as investigators? Are you guys serious? Come on. I would like to have decorum too. How about some transparency? If we don't do the right thing for our children, we will not be able to undo the harm that this opens up to our district. Our district will be a beacon for every child sex predator in the country and possibly abroad to come here because of this type of behavior. It's not only accepted, it's praised and defended. Thank you.
Mrs. Jackson. Mrs. Wearden, Mr. Argo. And Mr. Perino follows. Go ahead, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say bear with me because due to the changes that just went into effect, which I completely understand, I'm going to be winging it up here. Um, I thank you for changing the way that we sign up to speak for these meetings because I have had to leave work several times in order to get here on time. And so I prefer this method that will be online or in person at nine AM that is more equitable to all parents or community residents. Um, and while I would have loved to stand up here and talk about all the great things that the staff do, I am not going to. Uh, because I understand why we do have to have these rules in place with the way that some of us can't follow them as is. Um, and then on the agenda item, you have curriculum, and so I have this handout for the program of study. And I just want to say that seeing the report card, um, the bridging the gap, and also I think at a previous meeting, you had talked about updating the curriculum to provide more CCP and AP classes, and I see that on here. And also, I appreciate the fact that the Ohio Department of Education infographic is on here so that I understand because as having a junior, we are looking at those classes, and it's nice to see that we will be able to blend her CCP class um, with the major that she has intended. So I appreciate seeing this stuff. And as you've said before, board, um, getting back to the business of educating children. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Mrs. Wearden, Mr. Argo, Mr. Perino. Mrs. Steinbrink. This is weird. Go ahead.
I'm Vicky Worden. And this time I'm going to speak to you about two things. And I'm not going to name staff. I'm just going to use the term staff or teachers or
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we can't hear anything about staff.
Well, I already
Complaints, complaints were compliments. But you're welcome.
Just as I go.
And you're also welcome to send it to the board if you'd like to.
Okay. First, I want to thank you all for your part in making Lakota the wonderful school district that it is. Both of my grandchildren are having fantastic, a fantastic year this year. The kindergartner is severe ADHD and has a 504 plan. And my daughter and son-in-law are extremely pleased with the meeting and every intervention and accommodation that went into it. And we much appreciate the wonderful year that that little boy is having. The other one is a first grader and reading about two years above grade level. And differentiation is happening. And his needs are being met. He's learning, thriving, enjoying school and having a wonderful year. I encourage you to appreciate and keep supporting your staff. They're great. Second, I want to share with
I have to give you one warning on that.
I want to share with you several things that have saddened me. I put high importance on fiscal responsibility. And it made me very sad that you felt the need to spend money on an investigation of something that had already been investigated. I understood, but it made me sad. It also makes me sad that you have felt the need to spend money on an audit of the curriculum. I gave you the only correct definition of CRT several months ago. But I have sensed that you all don't have an agreement on what it is. And so I'm concerned that perhaps the auditors don't have clear direction. And my fear is that you may as well be paying them to look for cooties if they don't have clear direction. I'm also extremely sad that at the last board meeting, one of you felt the need or the urge to state their political affiliation, which I think is, has no place here.
Ma'am, I have to ask you to wrap up.
So just to spin back, thanks for the great year my kids are having.
Mr. Argo, Mr. Perino, Mrs. Steinbrink, Mr. Jesse follows.
Uh, my name is Alex Argo. I had a three quick topics to cover. Um, so I was looking over the notes for the program of study updates. And I'm excited to see that the fine arts classes that exceed the rigor academic demands and student expectations of an honors course will be recognized as such now uh, by being weighted. My three years of symphonic winds uh uh, sure could have given my GPA a bit of a bump when I was a student here. Um, I was at the student, uh, the community conversation about ban right before COVID hit us uh, but then I think it was in 2019. And I hope soon we can put some of these distractions behind us and get back to some of those conversations that were being had. Uh, maybe about restoring some of the music programming that has been cut uh, back since the previous discussions of an operating levy. Um, the the next topic was, even though it's it's now policy, I'm still a little bit concerned about the logistics and accessibility of the new uh, public comment signup. Um, so members of the public have from the agenda publishing until nine AM of the day of the meeting to sign up for the public comment electronically. So typically goes up after regular business business hours on Friday. This week, I think the agenda went up around noon yesterday. Um, so if we'd been using this new policy, you would have had from one hour before the Bengals kickoff until nine AM today. So that's like less than 24 hours to sign up. If you wanted to sign up in person at central office, you would have had a few hours during the workday today to sign up. Um, if you wanted to sign up because of the presence of the master facilities on the agenda, you would not have been able to because I don't think that showed up on the agenda until um, later today because it wasn't originally on the agenda. So when we have board members who are routinely putting surprise pre-planned agenda items uh, like the current planned curriculum audit uh, on the agenda in the middle of the meeting. Um, or uh, wanting to vote on the mask policies or things like that, how how is a member of the public to know when to sign up? Um, I also wanted to uh, briefly mention that I got a copy of the Lakota East Spark. Um, the November issue today in the mail, and I have to say these young adults sure have quite the journalistic eye. They covered a variety of issues that were super important to them, but the first story had this headline. The Spark editorial board voted twenty-one to zero that the Lakota Board of Education decision to conduct a curriculum audit with select committee members regarding critical race series unnecessary. They nailed it. They pointed out a variety of reasons why it's a bad idea, but if you want to see them all, you'll need to get your own subscription. Or you can still stop this straight waste of time and resources. There's no reason that you can't rescind the ill-conceived curriculum audit before many resources are wasted. Thanks for your time and have a great winter break.
Mr. Perino, Mrs. Steinbrink, Mr. Jesse, Mrs. Bretta Steggi.
Good evening. My name is Joe Perino. And I'd like to thank you for allowing me to partially exercise my first amendment, right? I want to talk to you tonight about how the board has known about questions surrounding morality issues for a long time. No real action has been taken due to four of the five board members turning a blind eye or even su- supporting the morality, the immorality. Why did the majority of the board accept the report that was given as a thorough investigation, even though it included no supporting details to support the conclusions? If words and actions are being taken out of context, can the majority of the board please tell us in what context would those words and actions not be morally reprehensible? Can the majority of the board tell me? If your spouse came to you talking about these things, would you participate? Why is the board so focused on criminal activities? Is the bar so low that fantasizing and role-playing sex acts with young kids is acceptable? There was a statement that no lines were crossed, and it occurred to me there's so far beyond the lines, he can't even see the lines anymore. You guys should easily be able to see the lines, though, and know that he is way past them.
Mr. Perino. No comments about staff, please.
There was a statement that this wasn't any different than any other pillow talk. That seems implied to me that there's been a lot more conversation about this than has led to been believed. I ask the majority of the board, please provide an explanation as to why you are accepting this behavior and allowing him to stay. Criminal charges are not necessarily for dismissing someone on moral grounds. The parents and the public are not satisfied with the board hiding behind investigations with no supporting details. It's time for answers from this board. It's time to restore morality in our school district. Thank you.
Mrs. Steinbrink, Mr. Jesse, Mrs. Bretta Steggi, and Mrs. Cameron follows.
Good evening. This is Melissa Steinbrink. I have two students enrolled in Lakota schools. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. It was a real pleasure to hear the uh, Ridge junior students speak about their experiences as Ridge ambassadors. I feel the students are already embracing the life lessons many of the adults in the room have yet to grasp. Thank you for having that great group come in and share the good they are doing in the community. And thank you. Hope you all have a wonderful holiday and break.
Mr. Jesse, Mr. Bretta Steggi, Mrs. Cameron, Mrs. Gaines.
Rusty Jesse. Um, I appear to comment on the board policy that you've already adopted. I think it's erroneous. Onerous, there we go. Oners. And I will be lead to more lawsuits against the district. I, you know, I asked several months ago about the agenda just because I had looked over the weekend or something. And the agenda had not been posted like the gentleman previously said, and I was told that was up to the superintendent's office about when it was actually posted in the content. And how, like he said, how are we supposed to know what you're talking about if it's not out there? Um, and my mom was someone who never got a driver's license. And if she wanted to sign up to speak because she saw something on the news or whatever, and she doesn't have electronics, and she doesn't have transportation, is she supposed to take a cab? First thing on Monday morning, up to Lakota's central office to try to sign up before nine o'clock in addition to all her other responsibilities in the home.
I think, I just think it's a bad policy. The more people, including government, try to restrict speech, the more problems there are, because this whole mess this fall we've dealt with has left rank and file teachers exposed because public figures were tried to protect, which I, I consider all of you at the table to be a public figure. So, and I think most courts would too. As far as the presentation tonight on the master plans, I think it would have been nice if you would have put a slide up there to refresh our memories about the, what the actual configurations were. Because it's been a while and, um, I thought that would have been useful. I, um, I have a question. I would like to know, Mr. Zink, how much money we have sent to the law firm that recommended, um, that speech be curtailed at Lakota local schools? Because I think that's a waste of money. I don't see how the government sits there and says, first amendment's of importance and it goes away. I haven't been talking for three minutes. I guess you didn't start it. Um, the other thing is what are the recommended, or what's the projection for number of students for the district? Say five years from now and 10 years from now, because you know, there's a lot of maturity in my subdivision. So if the plan really works, uh, that you're considering, is it, is it really a truly a good fit for where we're going to be? You know, 10 years from now. Thank you.
This is Brett Estegi, Mrs. Cameron, Mrs. Gaines. I think it's Brad Dietrich. Let us make an adjust, just one moment. Let's make an adjustment on the time.
We're running into lag on, on the timer. It's taking it longer than usual to start or stop.
Do you want me, I can use the timer on my phone.
Let's, let's, we'll do a stop watch upfront. Just a moment. I want to make sure you're getting full time. Julie, tell me when you're ready.
Should I give people a warning when they have-
No, I'll give them a warning. Just give me a warning.
Okay.
I can put one on my phone too, if that's helpful.
Yep, good.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, hello, my name is Kate Brett Estegi. I'm a parent of, uh, three children in the Lakotas School District. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, and I was originally going to compliment some of the staff and everything, but I will refrain. Um, I did want to say how much I enjoyed hearing about the student ambassadors. Is, is, is talking about students permissible? Okay. Is talking about students permissible?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, uh, it's really inspirational to hear how much these kids really do support each other. Um, I appreciate their leadership and supporting all of the student leaders that spoke today. These are all huge foundations for future leaders and as they said, teaching kindness and respect and learning through that group is so critical. And I think it's a wonderful example of even social emotional learning and the positive impact that it can have on our students and their educational experiences. Um, and, uh, I know you've had your hands full lately with, um, thorough explanations regarding facilities planning, and I look forward to more thorough breakdowns of the selections that were voted on. Um, when would there be more information available if we were going to be moving forward with the CRT audit? Um, that was also like, has been previously brought up a major, uh, topic in the Lakota Spark. Um, things like, you know, if, if this is actually going to move forward, when would it begin? How would people be selected to be on the committee? Are there professional requirements or prerequisites? Would there be political concern over agendas that could be on individuals selected for that committee? Um, if, in the other question too, is, you know, if most of the staff, there, there were surveys done in the Spark showing that I think it was something like 95% of the staff there felt the CRT audit was unnecessary and nothing would be found. Um, probably, I think it was a similar number for the students there. Why are we continuing to devote time and money and resources to this? Um, that said, have a great holiday. Thank you.
This is, Mrs. Cameron, Mrs. Gaines, Mr. Dietrich. And Randy Patrick follows. This is Cameron. When you're ready.
All right. Heather Cameron. First of all, I know people in the district celebrate many different holidays this month. I want to wish everybody a happy, healthy and restful break. Everyone has worked hard this semester and the break is well deserved. Whether you celebrate Kwanzaa, Hanukkah or Christmas, I hope you have a wonderful break. I think the students that presented this evening are wise beyond their years. It was phenomenal to hear how emotionally intelligent the student ambassadors are. And it gives me hope for the future. Their ability to embrace and respect one another despite different races, religions and family styles um, will greatly benefit them now and in their future endeavors. Most companies look at emotional intelligence as criteria for new hires. There is no doubt in my mind that these kids will be very successful in life. In the last few weeks, our district lost an important, very loved community member. It has been amazing to see the community and the district come to, come together to help this family. These are just some of the reasons I support Lakota and I will continue to do so regardless of the slander that has been spewed against the district by very few community members. Thank you.
This is Gaines, Mr. Dietrich and Mr. Patrick. Can you hear me okay? Go ahead.
My name is Laura Gaines. I feel it is very disingenuous that the speaking rules have changed just this minute. So please bear with me while I try to adjust. I have come to many of these meetings, but I have never spoken before. I never actually thought that I would become involved with our schools. I never dreamed that there would come a time of such outrageous betrayal, deceit and immorality. Certainly never thought I would see the cover-up of crucial information kept from the public and parents. And I'm not speaking here about one person. We moved to Westchester seven years ago because I had heard such great things about Lakota schools. I first became concerned about the lack of forthrightness from the board when they led us to believe in the summer of 21 that they would not mandate masks on our students, but then changed course unexpectedly just two days before school started. For the sake of time, let's just say that I learned then that the board could be less than transparent and has more interest in their own goals than hearing from concerned parents. I was excited when we got a conservative school board majority, but then almost immediately witnessed the over-the-top abuse and bullying of a caring, hard-working board member who best I could tell was simply asking the right questions and proposing policies that made practical sense. And she's received zero support from her supposed conservative board members. So let me say thank you for everything you do. You're appreciated by many of us. Which brings me to the current issue at hand. I was here two weeks ago and listened to the board describe the board's own investigation from November 2nd, in which it was stated at least twice included a full forensic investigation. The board told us that we were, they were very confident in the results of their forensic investigation. And now that it was complete, we need to move on. And yet, when we asked to see the results of said full forensic investigation that Lakota apparently paid upwards of $40,000 for, this is what we received. I'm not sure. I think, um, as someone would say, even a kindergarten nerd can see that these are blank. Oh, it's totally blank pages. Is this how the board maintains transparency with parents? Is this how they build trust? Blank pages? The community needs to hold the board accountable and to do so, we need to be informed. It was actually discovered, these allegations date back to 2020, but the board at the time failed to address the situation. A pattern of dishonesty, lack of transparency-
Mrs. Gaines, I'll have to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay. I implore everyone to go to protectlakotakids.com where you can see the transcripts of the unbelievable conversations that have taken place. Please go there and do everything you can do. Get involved. It's time for action.
Mr. Dietrich and Mr. Patrick will wrap us up. One moment, please.
Sorry.
All right, we can get you both in. Let's go.
All right, Dietrich, thank you for letting me speak. Or is that illegal? Is that a compliment? Um, I didn't prepare anything formally, but I still don't have my public record requests from over a month ago. Um, the last two weeks, the lawyer told me his son has been sick. So I asked him, maybe somebody in Lakota could help me, or it seems like we're paying a lot of money to this lawyer. Maybe they have more than one employee. Um, so hopefully I can just get my public record request lawfully fulfilled soon. Along with that, I wanted to express the public participation policy is frankly stupid. It violates the First Amendment and is very ambiguous on what is obscene. Is crap obscene? Is a raw potato obscene? Who decides what is obscene and what is not? Can I say Dame, but can I only say Hoover Dame? I don't know. Can I wear a shirt that has a cuss word on it? Or didn't we already learn in Cohen versus California that we can't? It's this case that was used to support the US Supreme Court and SPA versus Village of Skokie. We are allowed to say what we want in these public venues. Now you can limit us to three minutes, two minutes. You can restrict our access to speech, but what we say, you can't really tell us because there's no way to define what's a compliment, what's a, a, you know, negative thing. As long as we're speaking in a reasonable, you know, loudness and, and somewhat decorum, but even decorum, what is decorum? We don't know. There's no way any of you guys can judge it because out of all of you guys, one person might say that's obscene, while the other person says that's okay. I mean, if we go back to the seventies, you know, there's a lot of issues of what's right and what's wrong. And now we know a lot of that is wrong. A lot of people would say there's a lot of obscene things in the fifties. Now we know them to be, you know, it was wrong. But then it would have been bad if you would have, you know, had different people up here speaking of different colors. We don't know what's obscene. Nobody can decide that. That's why the First Amendment is so important. So please reconsider the, the policy so we can have, you know, discourse and, and improve our score and improve our community, which I think everybody's trying to do either side of the debate. Thank you.
Mr. Patrick.
Good afternoon. Hi, Randy Patrick. I'm the proud father of two wonderful teachers. Uh, am the product of some wonderful teachers that-
Sir. No comments about staff, good or bad, please.
Okay, sorry. All right, then I'll restrict my, uh, comments to the, uh, policy dealing with public, uh, participation. Right. I want to express my disappointment with the board's approval of its meeting pu- uh, public party participation policy. While public participation is required by the, uh, is not required by the OI code or the Board of Education, it is recommended by the Ohio, Ohio School Board Association, which I believe the majority of you are quite fond. I deem community input to be critical to board decisions. Well, why do most of us believe in local governance of public schools? We are in the midst of a cultural revolution in this country that is greatly impacting our K-12 education system. It only seems natural to me that board decisions on associated issues should reflect the moral values of the community. Moral values are generally defined as guidelines that assist the community in deciding between right and wrong. Public participation in the board decision process will make the board more aware of the divisive cultural issues, engage where the community stands on these issues. The proposed revisions you approve will significantly reduce, uh, public participation. The board's pawfer, pawford, proffered reasoning for the mo- more regulated participation was nonsensical and rings hollow. Board arguments that somehow candidates will not apply to Lakota's job openings for fear of mistreatment in public meeting is groundless. Let's be real, what job position will likely be subject to close public scrutiny other than the superintendent's who oversees the entire school operations? I want him grilled like I was during my last job interview for a position with less, much less responsibility. Also, the timing of the policy revision smacks of a ruse to stop the community vocal dissatisfaction with recent superintendent investigations.
And that ends our public participation. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move to administrative reports, number nine. Program of Studies and Curriculum Focus Update. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor. We've already heard several times tonight about, um, the program of studies and we asked Mr. Coney um, to come up to the podium and address any concerns or questions that you might have. Um, just as a reminder, I sent that to you, you know, board update last week. Um, very minor changes, but certainly some that have been, um, as we heard tonight, pretty welcome.
Okay.
So Keith, is, is there anything else you want to add to?
Uh, no, I think everything's in that, uh, in that update that I shared with the board. There was a typo. I apologize. We're not canceling, um, CP Biology. It's CP Biology 2 that's being phased out. Um, because there wasn't interest in that. So everything else is in there. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And what I do recognize that I skipped over eight, so we will come back around to that.
I was one-
Let's stick with number nine for now. We just wanted to take you by surprise, Mr. Coney.
Thank you.
Um, I appreciate the, as was mentioned at the mic earlier, the weighting of the, um, fine arts classes as well as some of the band classes. I think we've seen students who have been hesitant to take those classes because they weren't weighted. So I'm glad to see that that was put into place. Um, and, and again, just, I had asked a question of Mr. Miller, who then he looped in Mr. Coney. So I just wanted to share with the board. Um, I had a question on how with this nexus spell and we're doing interventions, this is at the high school level. Um, and he reminded me that in the past, we didn't, we had students come for a zero bell, but it was only a very small, finite group of students who came for that extra bell. And it was typically, not always, but often students who were involved in perhaps more than one band class or that kind of thing. So it gave them that opportunity. And now all students are coming during that time. So while it looks like they have more non-academic time, it's really time that they weren't there previously that they now are at school. Many are accessing interventions while others are given that opportunity should they need it. But they do have that opportunity to use it to catch up on their studies if they won't. So I just wanted to share that with everyone in case anyone else had that same concern I did, that that was, was shared with everyone. So you can, I, if I put words in your mouth.
Uh, we've actually-
Thank you for that. That was very helpful.
To expand the number of, uh, interventions we provided to high school, which is not a typical uh, experience, uh, in order to intervene with students who might be failing classes or whatever else. Uh, it's been successful for us.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, and the other piece is about the fine arts way to credit. That's been a piece of discussion for us for the last couple of years. Uh, did our due diligence, studied things, looked at it, thought it was the right decision to make in collaboration with the department chairs, the counselors, the administration from the school. Uh, what you see in front of you is really just the, the end product of about probably five months of work and planning tween department chairs, counselors, admins, all those folks. And the program of study, just to kind of back up a second, is, lives online. Uh, is typically the way that we explain the courses and describe those and give guidance to our students about what to select. Um, I only highlight here the changes that are being made. Uh, most of them are fairly technical. Um, and, uh, involved in what's going on in, inside of each department.
Did you have something else, Mrs. Shaver?
No, thank you.
So could you talk for just a moment about how many, um, honors courses and AP courses we offer and how we compared other districts?
Um, I don't have the exact figures in front of me. Um, we have added AP courses and we are, I don't want to misquote that. I'd be happy to get that to you afterward. We are on par with almost all of our peers or a couple of school districts who offer more than we do. But we're very competitive with the rest of the competitor, the, um, peer districts that we, uh, compare ourselves to. I'd be happy to get that information to you.
Suboting.
Um, I have the question, um, the CCP.
Hmm.
There's only one that I know of, but are you referring to the con- content creation primer? Is that what CCP?
I'm sorry, that, lots of, uh, lingo in here. So, um, college credit plus is, no, it's easy. There's all kinds of, uh, all kinds of lingo in here. So college credit plus is dual credit. Where students get, are enrolled still in high school and they can choose to take, uh, college credit courses. Those are either taught in our, in our high schools, or the students can travel to colleges to get that credit. Um, so that is the CCP what we refer to in there, a CCP.
Okay.
What you're referring to is that content creation primer? So it's a, one of the Butler Tech classes.
Okay.
Would you like me to, I can-
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Um, and then can you please, um, elaborate on here? I say it's under hashtag, we are future ready. Increase the number and diversity of students taking honors, AP and CCP courses. How, what is your plan? And help me understand what, um, increasing the diversity of students looks like for Lakota.
Great question. Um, so what we have found is that by looking at our data, there are a number of students who do not access those kind of courses because they either move in later to our district and miss some opportunities to be identified as gifted, and therefore they miss out on some of those chances. So we wanted to be intentional about- So we wanted to be intentional about finding those students who might not necessarily have been selected in the past to be a part of that. And give opportunities to them, especially in like sixth, seventh and eighth grade, when we're making some designations about what classes kids can take and recommendations. We've had some success about kind of broadening who we see as, as an honor student because they have the capabilities. We don't always, we hadn't always identified them early on. So that's what that role looks like. I'd be happy to share some of the data that we've gathered around that.
Yeah. What do you broaden? Like, how do they qualify? Do, is there a test that you have to take to qualify? And then are you lowering the grade to apply for those classes?
So typically students are identified as gifted at certain benchmark grades as they come through. And those, once you're identified as gifted, you're identified with certain services. There is not a test that is taken necessarily, but we have a rubric that we go through to look at. And there's a space in there for like a teacher recommendation. And so we've kind of opened the door for teachers to say, if there's a student you've worked with this year that you believe has the capacity to do this, you like to give them the opportunity as they, as they enter junior high, we'd like to try and then try that out. So it's not necessarily whether we're lowering a bar, they were opening the door to certain students in certain specific situations. It's also a concern that we've got too, is we don't want to water down anything. But we do want to be able to say to students, if you work really hard, we'll believe in you and give you a chance.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. D, Mrs. Casper.
Yes, the question I have is I know as much as we, we also now are paying attention on gifted students, but I believe that there are students that are not catching up. So what program do we have to make sure no child is left behind?
Yeah. So that's in, in all, all phases and all grade band levels. That's really that MTS S process where we have used our data to determine multi-tiered systems of support. So how do we use data to identify those students who may have fallen through the cracks? And how do we do interventions within the classroom? And then how do we use our specialists to be able to push in and provide specific support for them early on? So that's a lot of what our, our systems and processes have been through elementary school and junior high school and now into high school. And so some of it is directly involving the courses that we're providing for students. And a lot of it is just the instruction and the intervention supports that we're providing for students along the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a question on, Mr. Coney, on CCP classes. Are, I've heard from a couple of parents that are, are we explaining what CCP classes are a little younger, meaning when my kids were in school, you pretty much planned your high school career starting in ninth grade. But now that you get credits in seventh and eighth grade for high school classes, are we kind of backing up just the availability of CCP? I'm not saying a sixth grader should sign up for a CCP class, but are we backing it up a little through the counseling system just to give them a, what's coming up in their future?
Sure. Just to clarify, we're not changing what is available to students. The CCP system through the state of Ohio has been in existence.
Right.
And is available to students in grade seven through 12. And what we are doing is we have heard from many of our parents that they feel like they're out of the loop a little bit until they get into ninth grade and they say, I wish I would have known these things earlier. And so we have sort of adjusted those things and made them more available to, we're not pushing that at all on seventh, eighth grade students. It's a lot to think about them taking college courses. But we do want them and their parents to be forward planning as much as possible with that information in hand. So we have created videos and slide decks that we'll share with our junior high school principals and counselors to share with students and parents. We've been more open about what those opportunities are, especially as we've multiplied the number of CCP courses in-house. So the students don't have to travel to UC or Cincinnati State or Sinclair to take those courses.
And especially because there's a part of that that we don't control, like deadlines. And I know that's frustrating for some parents. If you missed a deadline at the college level, there is no, it's not, there's nothing we can do on our end. So giving that information a little earlier.
Mr. Cane, can you talk for a moment about how many of the CCPs are offered on our campuses?
There are, yeah, sorry.
And how, how that whole process works a little bit, just for the sake of our community?
Sure. We've expanded from four classes to, I think we're 12 or 13 courses that are now offered in-house that you can get CCP credit for. So you don't have to leave our campuses. You still have to follow the rules and the rules are you have to apply to that university. You have to assign, have a letter of intent to do that by April 1st. You have to show a college-ready admissions score. So the number of pieces that you have to apply to that university. And then you can take that course in-house. So as we've expanded those, some of those are new opportunities. Some of those are chances we've had to have our teachers qualify because they have to have 18 credit hours of content area-specific knowledge for that area that they're teaching. So we've had those. We've also said through our VLO option, we had, we found that there were more online options that were available that we wanted to sort of customize for our students. So we've kind of broadened what those are available to our students as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Booty.
I have a follow-up question with the question that I previously stated. The information you gave me looks like you want to increase the number of students taking honors, AP and CCP. What do you mean by diversity? When you're saying the diverse, because your description did not fit the word diversity.
By diversity, I mean the, the number of students who are taking those. So typically, when I say diverse, are you, are you thinking I'm thinking just like racially diverse?
So, yes.
Okay.
I will be honest, when you say diversity, what that looks like is that you're basing whether on the gender or color or preference, that's what that says.
That's not what it says. It's, it's not my intent, I guess. The intent is that when we talk about the diversity of those students.
Yeah.
Is that there are, sometimes it's a kind of student, so students who come from different schools. We are, we do have a lot of students who move into our district. Sometimes their previous school experience was not as strong as what it can be here. And so when they come here, it's more difficult for them to, they might have the academic ability, but it might be difficult for them to demonstrate that in class. And so we want to be able to open the door so that those students, if they have that ability and we can challenge them, are able to do that. Might that mean that we have more students of color, that we have more women in some of our STEM fields? Then we might have more students of poverty who are in those courses. Well, I sure hope so. That'd be, that would be fantastic if we have reached out to individual, individual kids and challenged them to try and raise their performance in class. I think that's what we would want. And one of the ways that we do that is through honors and CCP and AP courses.
So what you're saying by this is you want to increase the number of students taking honors, AP and CCP. I just don't understand why you're putting in the diversity. I mean, you could say like from different school experiences.
I'd be happy to change it if you want to. We can meet after this and you can give me some verbiage to use there. I'd be happy to, to explore that.
Well, my understanding of this word is not what you are saying. And so I'm just trying to understand what you're implying by the diversity because most people would say that when you're speaking of diversity, you're speaking of something different than what you're actually saying. So I think it's more, I think from what you are saying, it sounds like you're speaking from different experiences from education, but I don't understand why the diversity is in there.
Maybe I chose the word that was not explained correctly. But I think that hopefully I've been clear in my, my explanation here. If I can add anything to that, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, your explanation has been wonderful.
Okay.
It doesn't match up with your description.
Okay. And this is just a report to you. This is nothing that is formalized. You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be endorsing this from the board. This is just an update for you.
I saw it. I had questions. You're the curriculum director, so.
Absolutely.
I'm asking you.
That's what we're here for.
All right. Any further comments, Bourne?
To save Keith some time, 23 AP courses, 15 honor courses.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think again, just for, I'm sorry, I was, go ahead. Just for our community to understand, our students do have so many opportunities with the college credit plus, with honors, with the AP that they, if they choose to go to school and start well ahead on that college experience while they're still here in high school, saving our families money in the long run or giving them more flexibility once they are in school. I, I have shared before, I had a student in my family who was able to start with junior status, really helped with football tickets too. From the different offerings that are offered here. So it really is amazing how many of our students are able to take full advantage. You see kids that are graduating early or just broadening their college experience once they do choose to go to a campus, if that's what they-
And also determining before they ever go to college and their parents begin paying tuition or however that works. If there are things that maybe that isn't where they need to be.
Right.
And it's tremendous for them to be able to get those things prior to leaving high school.
Absolutely.
Is there anything further, Mrs. Casper, Mr. D?
Thank you, Mr. Coney.
Thank you, Mr. Coney.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, anything further on curriculum focus?
No, I think, I think he hit everything that we were going to talk about tonight.
So I will say for future reference, one of the questions that I've heard obviously is towards student achievement and the lack of national merit scholars, those kind of questions. And I think that would be a quest, a conversation we need to have.
Absolutely. And I agree with that.
And perhaps talking about some specifics about how we plan to address that.
Yep. And our focus is moving forward.
We'll be looking forward to that in the near future. Thank you.
I would also like to put out there that we are looking forward to more quick transparency with our curriculum and possibly putting accessibility online. And I'm looking forward to working with you this year and seeing what we can do to be more transparent with our curriculum.
So Bourne, we will move back to eight. And I apologize for missing that on the agenda. Word updates. Move to A Butler Tech, Mrs. Schaefer.
I've got some things to pass.
Taking one of these?
Yes.
Take them down.
And then also if I can pass these along, one, two, three, four, okay. So a few things here. I just handed out the Student Success Newsletter for October and November. I wanted to share that there was a business advisory meeting that occurred on November 17th, where they brought in different community partners to the new natural science building and talked about Ponte Leep, which again, we've talked about here with the new expansion of Butler Tech's facilities. So they brought them into the currently new building that just got open and talked about what our business community, how we want to partner with our business community for the new facilities for aviation and advanced manufacturing. And got their feedback and it was a very good meeting. We had students, there were student ambassadors there that gave tours to see the great new building that's there. Our last meeting was relatively short because the superintendent was out for surgery. What I did pass along though was this tool that's being handed out to our different business partners. It's a cool little tool, but the best part of it is on it, there's a QR code. And if you follow that QR code, it takes you to the screen that you see up here. And it's careerconnect.butlertech.org. And there, there's an opportunity to look at different, there's different things, but the one that I wanted to highlight tonight was community partners have the opportunity to post jobs as well as folks have the opportunity to look and seek jobs. So it's open to anyone. If you go there and then click on the career connect, you can submit a job or you can look at what jobs are available. So it's a great tool for our entire community. And something that I encourage everyone to go to. And if you have the tool, you can do it simply by looking at the QR code, which is what the employers are doing. We have a, our Butler Tech Board meeting is tomorrow, but in addition, they always have the culinary students do a great job of having a holiday dinner and inviting prior board members to that event. So I look forward to that tomorrow night. I think we'll be well represented there. And then our next business advisory meeting will be January 11th at the School of the Arts. So that'll be a good conversation. In addition, Butler Tech just went to the National Association of Career Technical Education meeting. And at that, they had four different presentations that were done by staff. And in one of the presentations, there was actually somebody in the audience who broke down and cried and said, I want to be doing what you're doing for kids. So I mean, it's just when it's that powerful. They were given a lot of feedback that this needed to be a half-day session, not a, a one-hour session. So a lot of good things happening and continuing to happen. And we look forward to the growth and appreciate still the commissioner's investment in Butler Tech's future. And all of our students in the county. Any, oh, one other thing. At our org meeting, we will need to appoint a new Butler Tech rep. I look, I would love to continue in that role, but just wanted to make, put that on everyone's radar that that is coming up. We had gotten notified of that. So.
Anything further?
And that's it.
All right. Move to legislative. Mr. Miller.
Can I ask a question? Just real quick, that the career connect, is that something that, that is homegrown to them or is that just a program they use? Do you know?
I honestly don't know for sure. I believe it's homegrown, but I could be wrong. So I will check on that and get back to you for sure.
No, no rush. Just curious.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative.
We have several items to talk about. One, I will send you, that just came out today from the governor's office and I think falls under legislative would be, he announced the school safety curriculum for staff, Governor Dewine did today. So there's a lot of information that we are just getting and it literally came out late this morning. So items around, some, some of it is arming staff, some of it is enhancing school security. And also highlighting student wellness and mental, the mental health needs of our kids as well. But I'll send you, I'm sure you're probably getting the same things I'm getting today as we go through that. So I wanted to mention that. A couple of other highlights before I turn it over to my colleague would be Senate Bill 178, which would be renaming in the Department of Education to the Department of Education and Workforce. So DEW is the new acronym that we're going to throw out there, D E W. I think Senate Bill 178 will go through, maybe with some modifications, but I think that's going to happen. Couple other items of note legislatively. There is some legislation discussion about eliminating the retention component of the third grade reading guarantee. So that is House Bill 497. And probably a good thing for us to take a look at as well, that the state is doing mental health training for athletic coaches. And so we've had some, some things in that arena as well that I want to mention. Adam, you probably have many more than I do, but.
I'm only going to talk about a couple. I put together a little bit of a trying to work toward an executive summary. We're not quite there yet. I did want to talk about House Bill 601. This would potentially increase the contributions that the employer would pay to the pension systems. It'd be an eight-year phase in, so that would have an impact on our operating budget. So that would be one to keep an eye on. Also, House Bill 582. One of the components of that would, it's basically putting term limits on boards of education. So that's something to keep eyes on as well. And it would be two-year terms. Eight years max. So we're going to continue to drill down my list.
So that the board knows, we have a 39, 39-page document here with legislative tracking and it's not just education. It's obviously a lot of what's happening in the lame duck session. So I attended a winter finance workshop put on by the three educational associations, OASBO, OSBA and BASSA. And part of that was a legislative update. And the lame duck session legislative update was 89 pages out of that. So tremendous amount of activity right now at the legislative level. Mr. Miller, go back for a moment to 178.
Yes.
And let's talk a little bit more about those changes that, that we anticipate happening. It did sound at the finance workshop that I was at that there was, this is on a roll and it probably is not going to stop. Perhaps talk about what those changes are going to mean exactly because right now it's already passed through the Senate.
Correct.
It's in the House Committee. Today is proponent testimony. Tomorrow is going to be all testimony. If it passes out of the committee, I expect it to be on the floor for a House vote on Wednesday. So perhaps talk about that a little bit more. There are some sweeping changes to education.
Probably, I think the way to explain that would be that the higher department of education would convert to do. And it's going to be a governor-appointed position, almost like a cabinet-level position. That's probably the biggest change. There's also, and I'll let you speak to this point, but there's also huge sweeping changes on the school board member side of things. So maybe perhaps that's where you were going, if you want to hit that.
The state board of education would move to a very different role. And it, it would in many respects, in my mind, remove the elected official's voice for our community.
Correct.
And it will narrow- And it will narrow the, the decision-making process tremendously. So I do have concern about that. Removing more local control from education is a concern.
Yeah, if you remember, I think it was Governor Kasich who expanded the state school board from, I believe it was eleven to eighteen.
Right.
If I'm correct, and to get more representation on there a little bit, but those were certainly some political appointments as well. And now that's gone. In theory.
In theory.
Yep.
Is there anything else?
But there's track, there's, to your point, there's traction on it.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think at some point it'll go through soon.
Mr. Zink, did you want to add anything else? On one seventy-eight?
Not right now.
Mrs. Bodie.
Yeah, I think it's suspicious because they added two thousand pages at the very last minute. And again, it is in the lame duck session. And I have heard both sides of the argument, but I still have not been able to get my hands on the two thousand pages to read it fully and to understand exactly what is all entailed in this bill. Which I understand is their intent. Because they did like a lot of backdoor, like it didn't go to, what was it? They didn't go to a conference committee. It just went right.
Usually it's posted on the weekend before it's introduced. And this time it was not, so.
We just kind of all found out about it, I think. And I'm, the verdict is still out. The verdict, verdict is still out on whether this has been going to be beneficial for the education program.
I'm not positive, and I'm just saying this. I do believe that that two thousand plus documents online now, the PDF is online now because I was interviewed by Spark for it and they had it, so.
Just gone online because I look for it to see it.
So we all need to read it before we start.
It's actually two thousand, uh, two thousand one hundred forty-four pages. But the summary of it, that's, that's all good things there, except that there are some things that a lot of people may not like.
Can you elaborate on the mental health training for athletic coaches? Is that revolving around? Do you know any more information on that?
Let me try to find it again.
I wonder if it has anything to do with the high rate of suicide that you see from NCAA athletes. I wonder if that has anything to, for coaches, how to better recognize that.
I don't know, just that's a speculation.
You don't have it, that's fine. You can email.
No, we do have it. Yep, so it is listed in law and require school athletic coaches to complete mental health training and re-advisory new requirements for their people activity program permits. That's the specific language in the bill. Prohibits an individual from coaching athletic activity at a public or chartered non-public school unless the individual has completed a student mental health training course approved and certified by the Department of Mental Health. Must complete the training each time the individual applies for or renews a people activity program permit.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Adi, anything else on legislative?
No. I'm good.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Zink?
No, ma'am.
Nothing.
All right, we'll move to community engagement. Mrs. Casper.
We've had, we had DPC last week where Adam did a fine job of doing a finance presentation for a little bit more understanding from a, I like to call a layman's terms. Those of us who aren't stuck in the numbers all day, a little bit more understanding. So that was really interesting. And I really do think it helps people to understand where we are financially and what we do, what you, your department does. We had president's council on Thursday where we're talking about the organizational handbook. We've been talking about this for
Years.
I, I, before I was even on the board and, and since I have been on the board, just the best practices for PTA, PTOs, boost organizations. It, it's, it's just so everybody's on the same page as everybody is aware of rules and laws. And so that we don't want to have to get anybody, we're not looking to get anybody in trouble. We're looking to keep people out of trouble. So Mr. Zink is working on that. We did discuss at our community engagement meeting last Monday that we are going to a full slate of community conversations starting in January. We will have, we're going to meet with our junior high students. We're going to do a curriculum one. Help me out, Mrs. O'Connor.
You're doing great. I'm going to.
And one with our English language learners, we're going to actually go to their event that they hold once a month, I believe, and have a community conversation with them. We haven't done that in a few years and it's usually very successful. We do know we want a gifted and a special ed community conversation. We know that's, the public has been asking us for that. We are going to do that.
Place until September, though.
I just, we are going to do that, but we're going to wait till September just because it'd be a little bit fresher and better in the beginning of the year. And also we are doing those separately. So we're not going to do one combined. We're meeting with our junior high students in February, I believe. Dates to come because we have to get on the facilitator's calendar. So once we get on his calendar and figure out what his dates are and availability of our administration, then we'll put those out there.
And we're anticipating possibly two community conversations a month for the rest of the school year. That would also include finance and a facilities update to the community.
And a mental health.
And a student mental health.
Student mental health. That's a, a one that's people have been asking for. Again, we've done that a couple of years ago and it was very well received.
Can we add a critical race theory community conversation?
So one of them is going to be curriculum?
No, curriculum, there's a curriculum on.
I'm specifically asking for critical race theory.
It would fall under the curriculum night to have that discussion.
That's what you're choosing to put it under?
So CRT would fall under the curriculum and that's where the committee has made a decision to have that discussion.
And what about SEL? Is there a program revolved around or a discussion?
That would fall under curriculum as well.
So you're, you were going to, with curriculum, you are wanting to discuss critical race theory and SEL in the same meeting?
That's what the committee has determined they're going to do. Yes. There's only so many evenings in this school year that we can do this. So yes, that's the plan for now.
We try to do more of a combined while we can.
Is there anything further on community engagement?
No, I don't think so.
Anything else?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to have my next presentation not have any numbers in it. I didn't realize how many numbers and, and different charts and stuff was on the slides until I was up there talking. So if I can do that the next time, no numbers.
We think you did a good job, Mr. Zink. It's a process of continuous improvement.
Exactly.
And more financial information is better than less. All right, anything else under community engagement? That's it? All right. We'll move to number ten, the treasurer's recommendations, action items. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from November seventh and November twenty-one. B is to approve the monthly finance reports, C, the dental care plus group, and D, approve eight hundred ninety-two thou- ninety-two thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars transfer from the general operating fund to the budget stabilization set aside fund. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendations?
So moved.
Was it you, Mrs. Bodie? And is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Schaefer, thank you. Is there a discussion? Mr. Zink, would you like to talk?
For the dental care plus, this is our administrative fee. We are self-insured. The rates have not changed, but this is a two-year agreement. So that's why I'm bringing that forward to the board. On the budget stabilization, I attached in the board docs as well as gave the handout, this is on policy sixty-two seventeen. And the way this works is it's taking the fiscal twenty-two, the year we just ended, taking the unencumbered fund balance and then subtracting from it the prior year fund balance. And then we take fifty percent of that is the transfer amount allowable. Now, there are a few other little things that we have in that policy, which also it speaks to a maximum balance allowable, which is a three-year average expenditure. And then fifteen percent of that. So that maximum allowable would be just under twenty-eight million. Current reserve balance is seven mil- just over seven million. And then we also have the max, max transfer allowable, which is five percent of the prior year revenue. Which if we had that capacity, it would be nine point six million. So this was, this is allowing for eight hundred ninety-two thousand and some change. That would bring, with this transfer, that would bring that rainy day fund balance up to just a little over seven point nine million.
Suzanne, could you talk for a moment about the difference between the rainy day fund and a normal reserves fund?
The rainy.
Establish it in the first place.
What's that?
Why did we establish it in the first place?
This is setting money aside. It is considered reserved funds and it would take a board vote in order to bring those funds out to a one-time expenditure. So it wouldn't be reoccurring expenditure.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Zink on any of these recommendations? Seeing none and no further discussion, please call the roll.
Ms. Bodie?
Can you please state what we are voting on?
Mr. Zink?
This is taking a vote on item A, approve the minutes for November seventh and November twenty-first. B, approve the month, monthly financial reports. C, dental care plus contract for administrative fees. And D, approve the eight hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred forty-nine dollar transfer from the general operating fund to the budget stabilization set aside fund.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll move to number eleven, the superintendent recommendations, approve personnel items, B, program of study, and C, approve donations. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper and Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a discussion?
I just want to make one note that the personnel items are a little bit heavy this month because we didn't have the second meeting in November. So this is really personnel items from November and December.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Bodie?
I noticed that there are a lot of retirees, so I just wanted to say good luck in your retirement. And thank you for working for Lakota.
Anything further? Mr. Zink?
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. We'll move to number twelve, new business. A, we need to set the date and time of the organizational meeting for January ninth is the suggested date, five thirty PM is the suggested time. And as we've done in the past few years, we would have the January regular first meeting. This will be the second meeting, Monday of the month that would follow the organization meeting. Is there a motion? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. The chair will second.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I mean, look. So the sixth, is that right?
The ninth. January ninth, five thirty PM.
Processes now, second Monday.
It would be a normal.
That would be our normal schedule would be the second Monday of the month.
My schedule is clear. That works for me. Um, it works for me as well.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
We will move to closing comments. Mrs. Bodie?
Um, yes. So first of all, I would like to, so sorry, why don't you jump right into this? Okay, first of all, I would like to state that there was a parent that mentioned that we need to get back to the business of educating and that's what we are and I just want to clarify that that's what we are trying to do, but it's hard to, hard to that's what we are focusing on. And it's hard to do that when you can't trust your superintendent and we don't currently have trust in our superintendent. And that's, that includes business of educating our students. I also would like to say that I would agree with one of the parent, uh, speakers that said that we shouldn't have spent money on the investigation. I absolutely agree on that because we have the superintendent's own words confessing that there is a disgusting discussion of pillow talk regarding minors and you know, they did document your your, your conversation and you put, and it's in your own words. So the comp, there, there's confirmation also that you, that the superintendent advertised for strange men to join his sacred relationship.
False.
Schools have also been, and someone mentioned schools, not being political, schools have been politicized for years now by the teachers' union and large institutions, and everyone knows this. What we are trying to do as a community is stop that. And then and volunteer basis. Hold on a second. Oh, and then, so when someone discussed the audit and a couple of people have mentioned that we're paying for an audit, but we are not. It's a volunteer basis. Am I correct? We are correcting volunteers for the audit. So although I would like to point out that no conversation has taken place regarding this, why I'm starting to feel like this was a smokescreen put up by the president because we have not discussed this further. And have a happy, or have a merry Christmas. Thank you.
Mrs. Schaefer?
I wanted to get back to your question on career connect. I was able to text and get that answer. And that was developed by the workforce development team in conjunction with a marketing team. So that is an in-house situation. So they would be happy to share anything on that. Good luck to all of our students on exams. It's going to be, we, because of COVID, that caused us to delay exams for kids who might have been out and not been there. So look forward to having those back. I think that's an important step that our curriculum department has taken. Congratulations to our Lakota Central students who were recognized tonight and for their artwork to be recognized. That's quite an honor in the state. Congratulations to all of our athletes who just finished their state round of competition. We had a lot of students who made it all the way to the state level. Loved what the Ridge ambassadors had to say. And also had the opportunity to visit a health class recently that Mr. Ebshire had invited all of us to go and attend. And they do that every year where the students present on a health topic. And it was great listening to him discuss how watching their students develop. Like they start the presentation and then refine and refine and refine it. And he said, seeing the growth in his students is amazing through that whole process. That's what he loves the best. Because when I commented on one group, he's like, oh, my goodness, you have no idea how far they've come from where they were. And he said, that's what I love the most about this project. You see the end result. I see where they started and telling them they needed to brush up on things and, and now look at what a nice job they were doing. And again, we're not all going to agree on things, but I think we need to be careful of speaking for others on the board and what their thoughts and opinions are. And I would like to also say that with our policy change on public participation, we still do have a dispute resolution policy. So there are still opportunities. And again, Mrs. O'Connor listed several other ways that there are to get in touch with the board, which I think is critically important. And I too look forward to getting back to the focus on student achievement and educating our kids. And I think tonight we actually made progress on looking at the curriculum and the, my program of studies and getting back to the focus of where we need to be. So thank you for that.
I certainly hope so. Mrs. Casper?
Again, I want to reiterate, Ridge, those kids were amazing. Again, they could teach us all something. I think they, you know, I, I love when people say, oh, the youth of today, you know, they're horrible. They're not, you know, they don't learn, they don't respect. That is the youth of today. That is our future. And those kids are amazing on what they're trying to do and just be just be kind. They're just trying to be kind. So I appreciate Mrs. Holder bringing them to us. Also, last week was a busy week for events. The choir or the bands did several band performances, the orchestras in the in the high schools, which were amazing. It's nice to see hustle and bustle in the buildings again. The East had Future Hawk Nights. I know West Future Firebird Night is coming up at basketball. And to have that going on with the band and all of the things that were happening that day, East- And to have that going on with the band and all of the things that were happening that day, East had for the first time what they're calling a senior solstice and they had the seniors come in at seven thirty. Um, and they had donuts and coffee and hot chocolate and they brought a bird from the zoo um to, I, I, they kept calling it a special guest and the kids spent all of their time wondering who the special guest was going to be and it was a bird from the zoo, which was very interesting. So it's nice to be able to have them invest in some of those different things. They're doing a little bit different opportunities for students in some of our buildings for seniors, just trying to get them more involved and kind of change some, some ways that we can celebrate our seniors. Uh, East-West game is on Friday um at West, um the first, for basketball. And my understanding is that at halftime, the softball team will be getting their championship, state championship rings.
Correct.
So that should be really exciting. Uh, just want to touch a little bit also on that there, again, other ways for the public to contact the board and that a reminder is when people talk about their freedom of speech, this is not a public meeting. This is a business meeting held in public and we are allowed to have parameters around that. So we're not stifling anybody and there are other ways to contact us to say what you'd like to say. I think we get emails from people who haven't, didn't have an opportunity to speak at the meeting, um, sometimes right after the meeting. So there are other ways to speak to us. But again, I'm super excited about all the student activities that are coming up in the winter months. Choir, I think, is this week. Band was last week, choir is this week.
Mr. Adi?
Yes. Excuse me. I want to start with the student spotlight tonight. Um, I was very excited to see uh, our students come out today to display um what I call respect. And they show us what we need to do as adults because I picked up today, uh, one of the, one of the students said something that I really uh resonated with me. She said, when you need respect, you give respect. Uh, one of them said, make better choices. Another one said kindness. This is coming from our students. Um. I'm so excited that we have diverse students stood here tonight and showed us what we parents and and community members need to do with each other. So that was a very big thing for me tonight. I want to say here that there are a lot of accusations, counter accusations on the board tonight. But I still believe that we are, we are people of integrity and we work with honesty. Um. We have to, whatever we do, remember that the future of s- over seventeen thousand kids are in our hands. And we have to cautiously undo them. Because if any kid, even if it is only one fail, we have all failed. We need to put aside our differences. I know if you're sick, you go to a professional, you go to a doctor to diagnose your situation. I'm here on the board. I don't know everything. So if I have any challenge, I go for experts. And when experts come and give me that expert advice, that's what I go with. So there are a lot of things going there in the community about all kinds of things. My tonight is to remind everybody that we are working with integrity and honesty and truth. If you, anybody have facts or anything else different, bring it. But so far, what we are working with is what we have. And nobody, I would never endorse anything that I know is not right. So the community need to know that we are doing our best to make sure we represent you well and represent these kids. Remember, there are many lawyers out there in the street. Everybody's trying to cash into the Lakota casino. They relate, the, the resources we have is for us, our, our, our district, for our students and for our staff. So I will say that that is the honest truth and we're gonna go with facts. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Mr. Zink?
We are currently working through our annual audit. It seems like that is starting to wind down. Thank goodness. Uh, shout out to all of the treasurer's office staff, the team in HR, the welcome center, all of the central office admins in the buildings. It takes a whole Lakota effort to make that go as smooth, as smooth as it has been going. Um. Seems like everything has been just going on at a big blur right now. Um, I was thinking over the weekend, it was like, all of a sudden I remembered that my wife and I are expecting. So we had our anatomy scan today. Everything went well.
Just remembered that over the week.
It was the worst thing. It's, it's, even though this is uh not new news to us, it's like, we've been so busy that I've completely lost track. So I know she's probably watching because that's her guilty pleasure. So shout out to Monica and um, again, another thing I would just like to add is happy holidays to everyone. So.
Uh, could, just a couple of things. Um, one is we saw the best of our kids tonight, and I think everybody sort of alluded to that in one way or another. I think too, we have that, have to have that same mindset when we talk about the new master facilities plan, that we're not just putting up warehouses or just brick and mortar. It's learning environments for our kids and what can we do um to accelerate their learning or to give them more opportunities and options? And so one of the things I was thinking about today is our speakers were talking tonight. One of the things is, you know, we'll have our sixth graders with our seventh and eighth graders. So there is some music um and band things that we might be able to do that. Um, they have been clamoring at for years and I get emails on monthly, not weekly, but at least monthly. Um, so we have an opportunity, I think, to um really um take a great school district and make it even better in terms of what we offer our kids. And so I'm excited about what comes next. And this will be a build out of years, literally a build out of years. So um, this will take us um a long time to do and um looking forward to, to that happening. Um, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Kwanzaa, whatever people are celebrating. I hope everyone enjoys it with their family and friends and that everyone stays healthy.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Um, I need to, to echo many of the sentiments that Mr. Adi had in terms of thinking about the future of seventeen thousand kids. It's always on our minds. And it has been a challenging several months. I'd say a challenging year in many respects. And I appreciate the effort and the time on my fellow board members' part on our administration and all that's had to happen this year to continue to move things forward. And that that weight of those seventeen and a half thousand kids never leaves our shoulder in all the decisions that we need to make. And even when there's disagreement about how the board has made those decisions, I would like people to understand that I've been, I believe they've been made uh from a well-informed stance with as much information as we can possibly gather and a very thoughtful process. I do want to invite everybody to the East-West game. It's always a terrific moment of school spirit across the district. And um, I also, I want to backtrack for just a moment and say that I also think a lot about how are we as board members in our interactions with each other, in our conduct, role modeling for our students. And I think that's really important to keep in mind as well. We're in positions of leadership and how we choose to handle conflict resolution is important in what our kids see. And I want us to always be cognizant of that. I want to say that I am very thankful for a few things. You know, we're living in a community where, especially this time of year, but I think throughout the year, we have a tremendous opportunity to give back. We see a selflessness toward others that I really value and appreciate. Our kids have an opportunity to learn public service, community service through so many things that we do as a district that I truly appreciate. And I value living in a community that considers that to be important. I'm also thankful, especially in the last few months, we've had many opportunities for professional development. Uh, I think we took away a lot. All of us attended Capitol Conference. We haven't had a chance to talk about that as a board at a board meeting. But I think there were a lot of opportunities for us to grow, no matter where we are in our board experience, and I appreciate that. I did have an opportunity, as I mentioned before, to go to the Winter Finance Workshop. And in addition to that eighty-nine page legislative update, one of the pieces that uh was a big part of the conversation was to talk about financial policies and best practices. And I was really very thankful for the fact that we had so many of those policies in place and so many practices, like the rainy day fund uh and several other pieces. We've already done that work over the course of the past several years. And just thankful that we've done that work and we put those into place. And the district's financial stability now is a result of that work. And so very thankful for that as we look at this master facilities plan. And for me, it is about student opportunities. What are we doing to grow things for our kids? And long-term financial sustainability for our district. When I look at the long-term savings. And again, as Mr. Miller said, it'll be eight to ten years as we build the plan out. But the financial savings that are inherent in that are tremendous and really excited at the thought that this work will finally be moving forward along with the planning. Our Ridge ambassadors were incredible. Even at the young age, we're seeing those leadership qualities being built and, and the the skill set just to be decent human beings. That's really terrific to see. They were um I loved the, I loved the one from Montana who said, it is really different than Ohio. And boy, was he right. I don't know if it was flattery or not. I don't know. I'm not sure. Hopefully he likes it here.
Flatter. We're flattered.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
No mountains.
Maybe warmer also.
Yeah.
That's true too. So I would like to thank everybody for a good board meeting. Thank you for the work that's gone on all year long. Thank you for your confidence in Mr. Adi and I through a challenging year. We appreciate it. And I would like to wish our community and all of our staff and our students a safe and joyous holiday season with their families. On that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Casper.
It's a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Adi, Mrs. Schaefer. I'm sorry, I miss.
I know, it's hard to hear.
And Mr. Adi? Further discussion? Call the roll, Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes, thank you all.